A standalone Dr. Public Hearing for Conditional Use Permit seventeen zero 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 six. And ask the Chairman of the Planning Commission to read into the record the legal reason for the public hearing tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request of MSJ Business Group LLC, represented by James Daniel, applicant on behalf of Shadow Creek Investors One LLC owner, represented by David Sutton, for approval of a conditional use permit CUP to allow for a liquor package store in the Planned Unit Development PUD zoning district on approximately six point nine four four acres. General location is eleven thousand forty-one Shadow Creek Parkway.
Okay. Information in the record. Let me, for the purpose of the record, that report that Councilmember Ardeno will not be present tonight because he's ill and his would be unable to be attended. So with that information in the record, let's move into item number three on our agendas, application information case summary. Staff report, six three eight.
Yes, sir. This is the aerial map for this conditional use permit. This is the zoning map showing that it is zoned PUD. This is the future land use map showing two eighty-eight Gateway. This is the site plan. It's shrunk, but you can see on the left-hand side of Kroger, the second suite is where they are proposing to have this packaged liquor store. That was another site plan showing the general outline. This is a view looking north. This is a view looking east. This is a view looking south. And this is a view looking west. This request is for approval of a conditional use permit to allow for a liquor package store within the Planned Unit Development zoning district. The property is currently developed as the Shadow Creek Marketplace, which is or has Kroger as an anchor store at the northwest corner of two eighty-eight and Shadow Creek Parkway. The proposed use will be located in an existing twelve hundred and two square foot suite within this center. Staff has received one notice in favor of the proposed use from the property owner and none in opposition. No phone calls were received either in support or opposition of the proposed conditional use permit request. Staff recommends approval of the requested conditional use permit for a liquor package store on the approximate six point nine four four acre site for the following reasons. The parcel is surrounded by other commercially zoned properties. The proposed use is a retail use of similar size and intensity to the surrounded retail and commercial uses and therefore compatible. Location is not at an entrance to residential neighborhoods. The location in an established shopping center mitigates the potential for negative aesthetic or activity that might accompany that type of retail use. The applicant has not proposed any modifications to the suite, such as bars over the window or additional light, which would negatively affect the surrounding businesses. If the CUP is considered for approval, staff recommends the following conditions. Number one, bars over or behind the windows would be prohibited. And number two, neon and LED strip lighting around the doors or windows would also be prohibited. This completes staff's report.
That completes your report, okay. Information in the record, let's move to item three B, which will let the applicant make a presentation. Is the applicant here? Thank you for being here tonight.
I'm Princey James, living in two four zero one Shorebrook Drive, Pearland, Texas, seven seven five eight four. Today, I'm representing MSJ Business Group on behalf of Shadow Creek Investors LLC. MSJ Business Group is a partnership firm, having three partners, Mr. James Daniel, Mr. Thomas Stephen, and Mr. Mammon George, and they have enough experience in retail business. This proposed location in Shadow Creek Marketplace is suitable for liquor liquor package store, and it will serve especially the Shadow Creek and Silver Lake community. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Good. I appreciate those comments. Thank you very much. Moving to three Cs, does staff have any wrap-up comments at this point?
Yes.
No wrap-ups, okay. Move to item number four on our collective agendas, is which would allow anyone who'd care to do so to enter into the record or comment either in support of or in opposition to the CUP request. And be sure if you do plan to speak that you have filled out one of these forms, or if you haven't, go ahead and speak and fill one up before you leave. That information in the record. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to enter into the record or comment statement or testimony regarding this proposed CUP request? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to enter into the record or comment statement or testimony regarding this request for CPU? Disagreement? For the third and final time for the purpose of the record, before I move forward in the agenda, is there anyone in the audience who would like to enter into the record or comments, a comment statement or testimony regarding CUP two thousand, which is zero 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 six? And what are zeros in there? In hearing none, we will move then to item number five on our collective agendas, which will let the council, planning commission, and staff make any comments or questions. I'd like to start the council comments with Councilmember Carbone.
No comment, Mayor.
Okay. Ask my Reid.
Just, I'm assuming that the applicant is okay with not having the bars and conforming with not having lights around the windows and whatnot?
Okay, good. Ask for more?
No comment, Mayor.
Okay, councilor Little?
No comment.
Okay. Res?
A couple of small things. So the changes to EDC that are later in the agenda, do you think those will take place prior to the CUP being finalized for this one and obviously not for the other ones?
Yes, because they still have to go through the TABC location packet and then submit for their building permit.
So at this point, adding those provisions is academic by the time they?
It is an academic.
Okay. Just one thing for clarification and for the benefit of the audience. In the packet, it shows the six acre tract, but what is limited in the CUP is only for that, only for that build-out. It's not transferable, it's not sellable, correct?
Correct. It's just for that one suite.
All right, thank you.
That information in the record, let's move to planning commissioner, Mr. Chairman.
Misses. No comments, Mayor.
Okay, my staff having to wrap up comments at this point. Very done. And I will move in the agenda to item number six, which will let me adjourn this standalone Dr. Public Hearing, which is six fifty-seven. Let me open a joint public hearing. Zone change seventeen zero 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 five, and ask the Chairman of the Planning Commission to read into the record the legal reason for this hearing tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request of Richard Scotac, applicant on behalf of Larry Darcy, owner, for approval of a change in zoning from multifamily MF zoning to general business GB zoning district approximately zero point six nine eight acres of land. General location is seventy-five oh one Fight Road.
That information in the record, let's move. There's staff reports, if you have.
Yes, sir. This is the case for seventy-five oh one Fight, zone change. This is the aerial map. This is the zoning map showing multifamily, and across the way is in the ETJ. This is the future land use plan map showing the property as high-density residential. This is a view looking into the property, looking north. This is a view looking east. This is a view looking south. And this is a view looking west. This request for approval of a change in zoning from multifamily to general business zoning district. The property is currently developed with a single-family home and a detached garage. The applicant proposes a wellness center and yoga studio on the site. The yoga studio was established without approvals and was not a permitted use within the MF zoning district. There's an open code enforcement case for the yoga studio. Staff received one notice in opposition from an adjacent property owner concerned about the additional buffers that would be required on their property if the lot were rezoned to a commercial use. One notice was received from the property owner in support of the request. Staff does not recommend approval of the requested change in zoning from multi multiple family to general business on the approximate zero point six nine eight acre site for the following reasons. Number one, the site is surrounded by residential uses and the zone change to general business will permit a number of non-residential uses that could have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Zoning this site as general business without any commercial context in the direct vicinity could constitute a spot zoning. Number two, the site is currently developed with a single-family home that is appropriate only for residential use and is surrounded by residentially zoned properties. Number three, the site is not large enough to convert the single-family home into a commercial site. For example, with four thousand six hundred and twenty-three square feet, twenty-three parking spaces would be required to be constructed to city standards for size, driving lanes, and concrete. The site just has too much building to be able to handle that much parking. The proposed use is not in conformance with the future land use designation of the comprehensive plan. The future land use designation for this site is high-density residential, and the proposed change in zoning to general business does not promote the type of development appropriate within this designation. And Fight Road is not built to handle commercial traffic. This completes staff's report.
Okay. I appreciate that information in the record. Let's move to three B, which will let the applicant make a presentation. And thank you for being here tonight.
Well, thank you for allowing me to be.
Yeah.
I made some maps of what I'll be discussing. Should I pass them out to y'all? I made some maps of what I'll be talking about.
Yeah, you can press them out if you'd like. Give them to the secretary there, and she'll make sure it gets distributed to us.
Yeah, sure. Make it easier to understand.
Okay. Sometimes when you try to say they don't behave as well as they should.
Yeah. Wait a minute. I must still have the rest up in the loading truck.
You could start off by giving your name and address for the purpose of the record.
My name is Richard Scotac. I live at three zero one zero Ravensport Drive, Pearland, seven seven five eight four. I'm in real estate. I worked for Remax, top realtor, both commercial and residential, and have been doing it since nineteen seventy. So. But the first one is a picture of the subject property. It's a large house on a small tract of land. Not too small, it's thirty thousand square foot of land. Now, this house is going to be there probably for a long, long time. The proposed buyer of the home wants to use it for a wellness center and a yoga studio. They have a yoga studio that's attached to it, and they just want to keep it looking just like this, as it is, for a long, long time. It presently has twenty-four parking spaces, according to the owner, and it probably has room to make more parking spaces. I could really not find anything in my information to support leaving it multifamily. Thirty thousand square foot tract of land is not a multifamily tract of land. By leaving it multifamily, we're condemning it forever to be unsellable, unusable. Actually, even as the planning commissioner just mentioned, it's used as a residential use. So I guess that would probably be an illegal use too at present. The owners would like to get it rezoned to clarify, he mentioned that the yoga studio was not permitted. A rezone into general business would clarify that and put the yogas in compliance. And the wellness center that Dr. Maxwell wants to put there, Dr. Maxwell's a psychiatrist. She deals in, she lives in Pearland, and she wants this location in Pearland for her office. She deals in PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorders, and other issues, and it's a good place. The house has five bedrooms, four and a half baths, so it's got plenty of room for people to come in and sort of relax or do what they're gonna do during the day. If you look at the big map that I handed out, everything around this property is vacant property. It might have a zoning on it, like the neighbor of Townhouse, but it's vacant, and I'm sure when they get an apartment developer, they'll come up here and try to get it rezoned. I presume you all are all familiar with Fight Road. If you take Cullen Street and head east down Cullen towards eleven twenty FM eleven twenty-eight, you have that large warehouse that's got fifty thousand square feet of Joe Evans. There's the first thing you hit is commercial use. Then you hit Tranquility Lakes Apartments, and you keep driving through Tranquility Lakes Apartments all the way to the subject property. Then passing the subject property are two more vacant tracts of land. Then you hit a little bitty tiny small warehouse, which is zoned right now general commercial, which I believe means it's okay as a warehouse and it can have outside storage. It's a little upgrade from general business. The next two tracts are vacant tracts, and they're both zoned general business. Then when you go on further down the street, I didn't continue it, but they're vacant and vacant. On the south side of the subject, south side of Fight Road, is a subdivision that is mainly nothing but mobile homes. Every one of them in there is a mobile home, and it has been like that. It's in the ex-territorial jurisdiction of Pearland, but it's not in the city of Pearland for some reason today. They have a small warehouse there on Fight Road across the street, but it's a warehouse, and I believe it's used for the utilities of that mobile home subdivision. And then if you head a little further east and down Fight, you'll run into the Cambridge Lakes subdivision. But that all has a wood and brick, you know, a wood fence all the way down to FM eleven twenty-eight, and actually within two hundred feet of the property, it only touches the corner of a couple of them. It's, I just can't see how we can say the subject is multifamily. It's too small, would never sell like that. No one would ever buy it like that. Multifamily by your own definition is apartment projects. I could read those, but I'm sure you all know those. Multifamily is intended for development of multifamily apartment residences and associate uses. You can't do that on thirty thousand square feet, it's got, it's a hundred and seventy by a hundred and seventy. It was miszoned from the beginning. The, on the planning commission's statements, he states that the forty-six hundred square foot of structure has twenty, would need twenty-three parking spaces. Well, it has twenty-four parking spaces at present. There's still room in the back to add, which would be no issue here. He says that a twenty-five foot side yard is required if a budding a residential zoning district. Well, it's not. You've seen it's multifamily. Tranquility Lakes is a multifamily large project. Hundreds of units are in there, apartments. So there's no side yard. The screen refuse, that's fine. Six trees, fine. Each parking space must be within a hundred feet of a tree, fine, that can be accomplished. Signage would have to meet the requirements, that's fine. There's no objection to any of that. But the general business area regulations you have for minimum lot size for a general business is twenty-two five. The subject property is thirty thousand four hundred. It meets that. Minimum, minimum lot width is a hundred and fifty. It's a hundred and seventy-three foot wide on your own documents. Minimum lot depth, it should be a hundred and twenty-five feet. It's a hundred and seventy-seven feet. It meets all the requirements of general business. It would straighten out that yoga studio violation, and it would allow the property to be put to a better use than it is now. On the second, on his recommendations, it says on item number one, the site is surrounded by residential usage. It's not surrounded by residential uses unless you can't call apartments residential unless you want to change your whole zoning documents. Residential use is a five thousand, eight thousand foot lot for each unit. The apartments are a lot larger than that. The site is currently developed with a large single-family home. Okay, single-family home. It's in violation of multifamily automatically. Forget the yoga studio. So how do we correct that? What do we do for this person that owns this property that was zoned after the house was built? General, was zoned multifamily. Says the site is only appropriate for residential use. With it's only appropriate for residential use, again, I get back, why is it zoned multifamily? And surrounded by residentially zoned properties. You look at my maps and you look at the maps of the planning commissioner, if you bring them back up on the board, it is not surrounded by residentially zoned properties. It's vacant property, the apartment, and vacant land. This is Fight Road. He says the proposed use is in conformity with the future land designation of the comprehensive plan. The future land use designation for this site is high-density residential. Now, I've been doing commercial properties since nineteen sixty-nine. I do property arbitrations for the state of Texas on issues like this. I had been pretty active. How could you make a thirty thousand square foot site high-density residential? It's just killing this property. Fight Road not handling commercial property, I remember saying that, is like, y'all have already taken some of the right-of-way on Fight Road to expand Fight Road. Fight Road over by Rogers Elementary School is already six lanes coming up to FM eleven twenty-eight. So it's quite obvious to anybody that Fight Road's gotta be on someone's plan to expand. But we're not talking about a whole lot of traffic anyway in the wellness center. And it means six people, probably patients or whatever. That's not a whole lot for Fight Road, not considering Fight Road. It's, anyway, it's an injustice to the property owner to leave this property zoned multifamily. He'll never be able to do anything with it. You can come down there tomorrow now and bust him for the yoga studio and a single-family usage. We've just told you, single-family usage and yoga studio. So get him. And the only other option is, we're here requesting a simple zone change when it's the right thing to do. It honestly is the right thing to do with this piece of property. If you go down Fight and just look at it, you can see that it's a beautiful piece of property. It'll remain that way, a beautiful piece of property, and the doctor will be able to treat her patients and have yoga for rest and relaxation for others. It won't change, the structure won't change, it can't change because it's thirty thousand square foot of land. There's not any fear there. And if you look at the zoning map of the city planning department, it has general business a block away, half-block away, another general business, and two more general businesses on Fight Road. It's not like a stranger to have it zoned Fight Road. And I've heard over and over again, the reason this was really done multifamily, it was an error when Tranquility Park was apartments wanted, you know, come in, and it was because they had such a big tract, it was just this drawn, and put in the same category as they are. I appreciate your consideration, and I'll go to the car and get the rest of the maps.
Good. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good presentation. Thank you, sir. Does the staff have any wrap-up comments at this point? No wrap-up at this point. Okay.
I would just say, Mr. Mayor, the property currently, even though it's zoned, is in non-conformity use in the multifamily district. It's actually a residential use, which is more comparable to a residential use in the multifamily district. And then regarding parking, the parking that's currently there is not in conformance with the EDC in regards to the size of the EDC outlines as well as the setbacks.
Okay, good. I appreciate that information. Thank you. Let's move now on our agenda to item number four, which will let anyone in the audience who would care to do so to enter into the record a comment statement or testimony, either in support of or in opposition to this request with zone change. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to enter into the record a comment statement or testimony regarding this proposed zone change?
Right here.
Yes, good. Thank you. Please come down. And you have filled out one of these.
Yes, sir.
Good. Shiver, shiver. You do good work. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Larry Darcy. Address is seventy thirty-four Robin Meadow Street, Pearland, Texas, seven seven five eight one. I am the owner of the property, and I will say that regardless of what Richard said over here, please don't come penalize me tomorrow for the fact that it's being used for mixed use. I purchased the property approximately five years ago with the understanding that it was a mixed-use type property. It was, I was initially using it as a single-family location. After that, we used the property as a yoga studio and rented the home there. We, the intent was, even then, was to create a wellness center, and we engaged, when I say we, me and my wife engaged the city, and we were told that it's best not to open that can of worms and just go ahead and operate as is. So we continued on that front because of the, because of that reason. No, again, the yoga studio as well as the Um, you know, again, the, the yoga studio as well as the, the, um, the wellness center both have very low traffic, uh, and when there is traffic, it's not during, for example, school hours when you do have a lot of traffic down that road, it's, it's after, uh, for example, yoga classes are at six and seven at night, things like that, and, and nine in the morning after the students are already at school. Um, I believe that the wellness center is actually, would be a posit, have a positive impact on the area and the value of that area. And, uh, and, and as Richard said also, when you, when you drive down Fight Road, what you clearly see is that it is almost heavy industrial because of all the warehouses up and down the road besides the Tranquility Lakes. In fact, when I bought the house originally, uh, although it's in the, part of the ETJ, uh, across the street from the house, there was a sign saying, "Future Home of Killin's Pest Control." So, another presumption that it was a mixed-use area when I closed on, on the house originally. Um, and then again, I want to reiterate, uh, the, the warehouse is just right, right next door is a, uh, it's essentially a cow pasture, next to that's warehouses, et cetera, so forth and so on. So, um, I, uh, and I also just want to agree with all of Richard's, uh, statements as well, so, any questions, feel free to ask, thank you.
Good, I appreciate those comments, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to enter into the record, please, please do. And I know you filled out one of these.
Yes, I did.
Thank you for being here tonight.
My name is Jan Briggs. My name is Jan Briggs, I'm with Keller Williams Commercial, 2734 Sunrise Boulevard, Suite 208, Pearland, Texas, 77584. I represent Dr. Maxwell, and I think that it is time that Pearland had a high-class wellness center. I think Pearland is, we are all going in one, in one direction, and that is to make it the best it can be. And I think that we need people like Dr. Maxwell to open things like a wellness center for this city. Uh, it will not, in my opinion, cause a great traffic jam on Fight Road because there are a few small cars that come during the hour and then they're gone. So, I, I ask you, i- if this is not what you want, what could we do to get this thing, uh, how, to get this thing to approve so that we can open a wellness center there? Do you have any suggestions, please let us know. Thank you very much for your time.
I appreciate those comments, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to enter into the record a comment, statement, or testimony regarding this proposed zone change? For the third and final time for the purpose of the record before I move forward on the agenda, is there anyone who would like to enter, enter into the record a comment, statement, or testimony regarding this proposed change? Hearing none, and, uh, let, let's, let's be aware that, uh, the action tonight is not what is built, going to be built there, but that affects pretty well what the zone change would be, so this is strictly changing the zoning of the piece of property for a future development on the property. But sometimes you have to look forward to what is going to be proposed at that point as to whether it'd be good. So, that information in the record, let's move down to item number, number five on our collective agendas, and, uh, let the council have a chance to, uh, tune in on this, starting with Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. So, to address some of your, your questions, uh, this lot in and of itself, you're right, it's, you're not going to get an apartment complex unless you do a high-rise with a parking garage, and it's just probably not even big enough for that, and not something we, we permit. Uh, I, I appreciate that. Um, you know, I, I don't know about this specific, uh, this specific incidence, typically when I've seen that, it's a, um, it's a piece of property that's either carved out from another development, uh, either they chose not to sell, but it gets left out, um, and it creates the non-conformity, um, things of that nature. It's a tricky piece of land because it's kind of gotten left out in the zone, um, but the difficulty is, you know, if we're to zone, if we're to change the zone, we really need to change the zone to what the neighboring zone is, to change it to a zone that is not necessarily in conformance of the neighboring zone. We risk what the state would deem illegal, which is it's spot zoning. Um, now, if we had somebody that was applying for the neighboring zone, which is, uh, light residential plus this, it might be, because that would conform a little bit with the commercial that's on the other side, I don't think that that necessarily would look like spot zoning. Um, you know, that, that becomes a difficulty for us because even if we choose, even if we believe, yeah, it can, we can, we can cha-change the zone, but are we spot zoning because it's not, it's not a contiguous zone in the area? Now, with respect to the, um, with respect to the, the wellness center, um, I'm not necessarily sure how we would classify that. Um, let's, uh, we have, some classifications, sheltered care facility, nursing facility, hospital facility, hospice facility, community group home. Um, staff, would you think that, that this would fit into any of those categories?
Mr. Perez, Dr. Maxwell is here.
Because it's really a staff question.
No, uh, that's actually Robert's.
Okay.
Uh, I think I would see a wellness center as a mix between Jim and Dr. Maxwell.
Would it fit into any of those categories that we just called? Uh, sheltered care, nursing, hospital, hospice, community group home? The only reason I ask that is-
Or a hospital, but it, but that's-
The on, the only reason I ask is because those are all uses either permitted or through conditional use allowed in a multifamily zone. Um, you know, I don't, I don't know about the yoga studio, um, you know, I don't, if it wasn't permitted, wasn't, if you didn't get a permit to expand and add the build-out and stuff like that, I mean, obviously, it's a, it's a non-conforming use, it was, you, you violated our criteria by putting it in there. We can't really, you know, it, that gets into the, is it better to ask for permission than, or forgiveness? Um, the, the home is, is existing non-conforming, as long as that use was in place before the zoning, and, you know, that, that can stay indefinitely, but occupying it with a use that's not in conformance of the zoning, um, I think that becomes a difficulty. If, if there is, if there is an opportunity for us to look at one of these uses that is, and I'd say creatively allowed with a, either permitted or CUP, to allow the wellness center, I think that's more appropriate, but the zone change, I think, is going to be difficult, even as, as I see it, as the state ties our hands, I, I don't, it's, it's going to be a spot in the middle of non, with other spots that aren't in that same zone, I don't see how we can define that anything other than zone change, and it doesn't match our, uh, our future land use plan, so, um, so I'm probably going to be a no on the zone change, but I think creatively, we could prob- probably find a way to get the wellness center.
Mr. Perez, on the spot change, there are-
Would you come up to the podium? Would you come up to use the microphone so we can all hear you?
Yeah, until bring up, if you bring up the zone map.
Oh, you have to from here? I have it in my truck, but I have to go back out and get it. Is, of course, we're in the center of the map. Right there to the right is general commercial, which is general business with outside storage. Then those ones right there, GB, is general business. Right north of that is GB, general business. So, there wouldn't be any spot zoning, in my opinion, if you had another GB right there. I mean, honestly, and that would fit in for the wellness center and the yoga studio. It would work for both of them and put a rest of this, and make them legal, and a good neighbor of Pearland.
I appreciate your opinion, it's, I don't share the opinion, so, uh-
I'm just, you know.
I appreciate that.
Can I, can I comment as though, on, on that?
You can talk, or you can just-
We can all get the message.
Mr. Perez, I appreciate your, uh, feedback on that, and, um, I think that we could fit the activities in that center into one of those, using a little bit of crea- creativity into one of those categories. Are they defined in the city code so that we could write up a CUP instead of a zone change and go through that process? Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
Um, I wouldn't say I'm suggesting it, I'm saying it's a tool that's available in the, in chapter two, chapter two of the, you know, Unified Development Code.
I call the question, I call the question, excuse me, this is not a dialogue session.
No, fair enough.
You've already had your chance to speak, sir, I'm sorry. Um, Councilmember Perez, continue.
I, I, and, you're 100% right, and I apologize, guys, uh, I hate not to address you, but it really isn't a dialogue session, um, and I, and I, please forgive me for that. I would say that there's, there's tools available, if we're familiar with our UDC, to possibly do a wellness center without having to do something that is going to be difficult for us to approve.
Thank you.
Councilmember Little?
No comment.
No comment.
So, my question would be, how do we do this without doing a spot zoning? I mean, it would be clearly a, if, the way I understand it, that would be a spot zoning, so how could we, how could we do something with this to, to change it? I mean, it's clearly a single-family residential home inside of a multifamily zoning, next door to it is, is zoned townhomes, but then, within the townhome section, there's a GC zoning. So, I mean, it, to me, this is just kind of all messed up. I mean, it's just not right. So, how, how could we fix it without doing spot zoning?
I think planning department's hoping that I take that one, Councilmember Moore, and, uh, I'll let them continue thinking that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just, it just, it's, it just doesn't look right, and there's no way to change this, and it's clearly a single-family home, but it's within a multifamily. I'm sure the house was there first, and then it was rezoned, but in my opinion, that section should have never been rezoned, if anything, we should have zoned along Fight Road. These other two tracks here were its townhomes to be GB or GC, um, to, to be, to conform.
There are other land use categories that are, are meant to serve as buffers between residential and non-residential things. Some people think that multifamily is not residential, but it is a residential zoning category as are townhomes. To do it, you would need to change your comprehensive plan and your future land use plan, uh, so that it, it's not contrary to those and it can't be perceived as spot zoning, uh, but the two examples that come to mind would be, um, neighborhood services, which are often served as buffers, especially next to, um, more intense residential uses such as multifamily, or, uh, office professional, if, if that may be the case. Um, I, I don't know if the wellness center fits in either of those without a CUP, not all wellness centers are created equally, and, um, I, I don't think that the state of Texas offers a specific definition for those, but those would be possibilities that come to mind. Staff, planning staff probably works more closely with those things, um, but, uh, I, I think it all stems from both the comp plan and the future land use plan, uh, that create the perception of spot zoning. If you go contrary to those things and put this one island, uh, of GB amidst the multifamily, or amidst the residentially zoned and used properties around it. Granted, it's not far before you get to GC and GB, but you still do have residential between the two things, and, and you are, in a sense, creating an island. Uh, we have what they call retail nodes, uh, sometimes that are at intersections.
Right.
Uh, there is an intersection directly across the street, even though it's inside the ETJ. Um, I don't know if it would justify it at the time, but that's absolutely one of the things, I think, one of the tools that the planning department would look at to accomplish that type of goal.
I, I just recommend the applicant work with staff and try to come up with a solution to this because I, I mean, this just, to me, this is, this is just difficult. I, I don't know how you get around doing that without changing a bunch of stuff, and, um, maybe that's what we need to do.
Uh, there is one other alternative, and that is to change the zoning, but make it another residential zone, whether that be townhome with the stuff to the east of it, or let it be single-family residential, um, which is what it was originally built as, uh, and, and that would, of course, create it in conformance with the zoning categories, and as we heard, uh, one of the people speaking tonight, when he originally bought the property, that's what he bought it for, and then converted it. So, uh, that is, of course, you know, it, it's a non-conforming use now, but that would be a conforming use, uh, if it was zoned as residential and used as residential and, well, that's what the building permits have it as as well.
Thank you.
And I would just point out that the, the, the uses that are permitted get very, get much more restrictive if it's a residential use. The multifamily allows more, um, more availability for some of those uses I use, I quoted before, either permitted or CUP, the residential, there's only one of them that's allowed either way.
Okay, Councilmember Reed?
Um, just, I, I guess just real quickly, I, I wouldn't want to see us, uh, vote yes for something, uh, just because, uh, the applicant actually presumed that certain things were a certain way, instead of checking through. I'm pretty sure, I mean, it was noted in deed exchange and that kind of thing legally, um, it's not going to get you, get you very far, and so, um, you know, I, I hate that happened to, to the applicant, but, um, at the same time, it, it's, it's not an excuse to, to go and change the zoning of this property. Kind of, I guess what's already been said to a certain extent, I mean, right now, there's a single-family home on there, the applicant said that, you know, he moved in or bought the home five years ago, and it was already built, and then started up a business, um, you know, obviously outside, or not conforming with zoning, and, and, you know, right now, we are already, at, at least what staff was saying, we're already, um, there's already some, some action being taken against that before this application, and so essentially, you're trying to right a wrong, uh, in my mind, and, and, you know, eventually you will get to, to the point where we can dialogue, but, you know, I, right now, I don't really see a reason to change it unless we're changing it to single-family, um, you know, other than that, um, you know, that, that's, that's pretty much, that's the only, that's the only zone change that I can possibly see, so.
Make a statement on the timeline, the yoga studio and the single, happened simultaneous to the purchase.
Councilmember Carbone?
It was always intended to be there.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is why-
Don't let us have a chance to do our, to counsel, give very input as well, so thank you.
I mean, this, this is why, you know, I grew up in business here in Pearland, and the city of Pearland always gets a black eye. Um, once I got on council, I realized sometimes it's the city's fault, sometimes it's not. I think here, uh, it's unpermitted use, um, so the fact of the matter is, the yoga studio shouldn't be operated there, and what you're asking for forgiveness, I'm fine with that. I don't, I haven't heard any councilman up here say they don't want to see the yoga studio or the wellness center there. Um, I don't know how we get there, if we can do the CUP, um, in the MF zone, that's fine. Um, if we can get to, to office professional, I think all Dr. Maxwell's uses would fall into office professional. But I, I think, all I've heard is, there's issues with the zoning, we're not comfortable potentially going with a straight GB, but nobody, nobody necessarily opposes the use, it's legally, we need to get there, and I guess that's what I'd push back on, on the planning, uh, planning staff and legal is, what are our options legally to, to get this to a conforming use and to get, to turn this property, it's odd property, it's a big, single-family house, um, on Fight Road, you know, you've got the, the warehouse across the street that's in the ETJ, it needs to be something light, lighter, in my opinion, than GB, I think this, this use would be perfect, so I would say, if, if legal and the, the planning staff could please figure out a way to work with the applicant and see if we can get this done, um, but at the same time, please understand that that's a non-conforming use, and this isn't all the city's fault, but I, I think what you're hearing is, everybody up here's willing to work with you to, to come to the right conclusion.
Okay, I appreciate that. Chairman, let's hear from you and the planning commission.
Mistress.
Yeah, for, for me, I actually like the use. My concern is if we make it GB, what would the next property owner do years down the road? Where would they take that GB? And that does concern me, but, but I do think you might have other options in office professional, where it, it's a softer buffer, and I would, I would suggest you work with staff to see if those are possibilities.
Okay. Anybody else? Just want to make one question. The applicant referred to conversations with the commission, and that was with city staff and not, and not the zoning commission. For me, this is a simple vote, uh, no, because of spot zoning, so we'll leave it at that. If there's another solution, uh, the applicant needs to work with staff.
At this point, us, for all of us, make it, just figure out how to make this thing work if, if it's a feasible idea. Uh, does the staff have any rapid comments at this point? Okay. Okay. It allows me to move to item six, which adjourn this standalone Dr. Public Hearing. The zone change seventeen zero 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 five at seven thirty-nine. Obviously, this has to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there'll be probably some extended discussion on this as we proceed. Moving to new, then to standalone public hearing number three. Let me open a public hearing with zone change seventeen dash zero 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 seven. Ask the chairman and the Planning Commission to read into the record the purpose of this hearing tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request of Kevin Cole, applicant on behalf of Anthony and Cameron Giuliani, owner, for approval of a change in zoning from single-family residential R1 to a general business GB zoning district on approximately nine point six one three five acres. General location is thirty-two oh five Dixie Farm Road.
That information in the record. Let us move to item three, application information and case summary. Three A of staff report.
All right. This is the case for zone seventeen zero 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 seven, thirty-two oh five Dixie Farm Road. This is the aerial map. This is the zoning map showing R1 for the subject property. This is the future land use plan map, showing retail offices and services. This is a view looking northeast, towards the Home Depot. This is a view looking northwest, across the street, towards the Walmart. This is a view looking southeast into the property, and this is a view looking southwest. This request is for approval of a change in zoning from R1 to general business GB zoning district on the approximate nine point six one three five acre of land. The site is currently developed with a single-family residence on the property, and is used as such. The applicant is not proposing a specific use for the property, but believes the allowable uses in the general business zoning district stated within the UDC are suitable. In the last year, there had been two workshops conducted regarding the development of this site for senior housing. Staff has received forty-eight notices in opposition of the proposed change in zoning. The letters were basically a form letter, which stated the following, that the GB zone accepts assisted living as multi-family. General business is encroachment on the residential nature of the adjoining properties. Once the general business is accepted, the owner can then apply for a conditional use permit. This opens land use to even broader uses of the land, potential decreases of land value with general business use. Land use is not consistent with the character of the existing neighborhood. General business opens to multi-story building, either two, three, or four. Office or multi-family on Dixie, not consistent. Spot zoning, review existing zoning, general business is on five eighteen Broadway. Dixie Farm Road is residential, not consistent with comprehensive plan, traffic impact, access, pipeline safety, and conformity to existing city requirements. Again, those were written by someone else that was not involved with staff, but was a form letter distributed out to residents. Four out of the forty-eight received public notices are from owners within the two-hundred-foot notification radius. The remaining are from the surrounding neighborhoods. Staff does not recommend approval of this change in zoning from single-family R1 to general business GB on the approximate nine point six one three acre, one three five acre site, for the following reasons. Number one, the site is currently developed with a single-family home that is appropriate only for residential use. The proposed change in zoning to general business would allow for a commercial entity to occupy the building, which would be out of character for the major corridor near a commercial hub with large-box retail stores. Number two, the applicant has no specific use for development. If the site were undeveloped, staff would be more supportive to rezone the land, or if a planning or development was proposed, that could ensure an appropriate use and buffering to transition from the large-box retail to the adjacent, single-family residential. And number three, while the rezoning would be in conformance with the future land use plan, the development potential for the site is out of scale with the surrounding properties. The scale of this site compared to the adjacent properties is much larger, which would allow for large-box style development. The buffers required by the UDC are not adequate at this scale to mitigate potential issues with height, noise, or other nuisances. This completes staff's report.
That information in the record. Let's move to three B, which will let the applicant make a presentation, and-
There you go, sir.
And thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Cole.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of the Planning and Zoning and staff. My name is Kevin Cole, twenty-eight hundred East Broadway, suite number C, two-two-eight, here in Pearland, Texas, seven-seven-five-eight-one. And I don't want to belabor some of the comments that were made in the, I guess, the form letter, as Mr. Griggs mentioned it, but I will pass out responses to every one of those, just so you'll have those for the record. I had emailed this document to the council earlier today, so they had it, and I don't have email addresses for the Planning and Zoning, so I apologize for that, but wanted to have that for the record, and not belabor the evening or the process by going point by point, so you can read their response, or our response, to their particular issue. As was stated, this is a nine point six acre zone change on Dixie Farm Road to a general business zone. What we're here trying to accomplish is to try to get some predictability in what can be done with this particular tract of land. As you can see, this is the 2015 comprehensive plan and future land use plan, that I believe is the current one. I don't think it's been updated since 2015. If you get a little bit closer, as was mentioned, this is slated for, both in the comp plan and the future land use plan, for this tract to be retail offices or some type of service. In fact, the tract to the immediate south of us is also slated for this particular use, which would bring that corner all the way down to the Walmart corner that you saw earlier on the aerial. I went back, and this is as far back as I could find, on the city's website. I actually had to find this in another document. I couldn't find it standalone on the city website, but it's as far back as I could go. Two thousand and four, future land use plan, and I'm going to apologize now for the next button, because it gets a little fuzzy. As you can see there, here's the site. The future land use plan has been the same, at least since the comprehensive plan and future land use plan since two thousand and four. The staff is correct. There is a existing, single-family residence that's on that site. You can see it here. We have stated to staff, not in writing, I sent an email earlier today, that in writing, I mean, we have no plans to keep that single-family residence there. It's a current condition. You see that many times throughout Pearland, where there's something current, and it's going to change over time. But, I've received phone call from Mr. Griggs, and told him that we had no plans to keep the house long-term, and also saw Mr. Buchanan at a restaurant. He asked me specifically, this was all within days of each other, and said, "We don't have any plans to keep the house." So, I'll say that for the record tonight, that we don't. As far as big-box is concerned, I have this up in front of you, so you can see the tract itself. The back of the lot is a pipeline corridor, same pipeline corridor that runs all up and down Dixie Farm Road and crosses. As you can see, the back, one-third or more, somewhere in that ballpark, becomes unusable. The far eastern edge of the tract would probably become some type of detention area, and then you've got your pipeline corridor there, which reduces the tract. There's about two point nine acres that's made up of the pipeline corridor, as well as the detention area. If you did some small, light retail along Dixie Farm Road, that's about two hundred and fifty feet deep. That's about two and a half acres or two point four acres, which leaves you in the middle of four point three. So, far as big-box retail is concerned, I'm not sure how, I've tried to look for a definition of that, and most definition ranges anywhere from fifty thousand square feet to two hundred thousand square feet. The Home Depot directly to the north, if I measured it correctly, is somewhere in the ballpark of seventy thousand square feet. So, a fifty thousand square foot building, by the time you put the associated parking, by the time you put the landscaping, the detention, landscape islands, as well as driveways, drive accesses through the parking lots and all of that, I just, I'm not sure how you fit a big-box retail on a site this small. And I understand the comment of this tract relative to the adjacent tracks, but I don't see how you do big-box retail. As far as access is concerned, there is an actual street crossover right there at the tract. Where you access this tract is going to be determined. This is a state-accessed road, and their rules are going to apply, and that in of itself is going to limit your uses as well. So, what we're trying to do is, again, try to get some predictability in what we can do. We chose general business because it was a category that gave us a broad enough category, where if it was an office use, or a retail use, or a restaurant use, it was all categorized there within the category. As far as CUPs are concerned, many of the uses that have been now deemed that you need a CUP in the GB zoning, at one point in time, most all of those, if not all of them, were by right in a GB. And over the years, that by right has been taken back into CUP. So, it's become more and more restrictive, even in a GB category. I understand the comment. Sure, any applicant, any future owner, future developer could come in and seek a CUP for some of that, and they would have to prove their case, and site plans, and those types of things. Staff is correct. We've not proposed any specific use, because we don't have one. The owners of the property have wanted to potentially do some type of a strip center along Dixie Farm Road, but that leaves, then, as deep as this property is, leaves the rest of the property for some other use. And so, we've just tried to find a category that's broad enough to be able to make various things fit. So, we're not married to GB, but, again, we're just trying to find some predictability. I think the application that came in, back in the fall, for the senior living, that particular buyer terminated their contract. They went back to Dallas. We've not heard back from them. This property is currently not on the market, and it's currently not under contract. So, you know, we're just trying to make it so, from two thousand and four to current, we're just trying to work within the current comprehensive plan and future land use plan, abide by all the UDC rules, nothing different from that. We do think it's, we don't think it's spot zoning. We think it's certainly within the character of the future land use plan and the comprehensive plan. So, with that, actually went the wrong way. Thank you for your consideration, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have as you move forward in your agenda. Thank you, Mayor.
I appreciate your comments.
Let's go back to your presentation, if I pull it up.
Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate that. That information wrapped and repeated. The staff have any wrap-up comments at this point? No wrap-up comments? Let's move to item four on our collective agendas, which will allow anyone who would care to do so to enter into the record a comment statement or testimony regarding this proposed thing. Let me call it first. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to enter into the record a comment statement or testimony? And we have a candidate coming down, and thank you for being here tonight. You've done one of these, I'll take it.
Oh, I did.
It went on the way out.
No.
Or you ought to have it up.
I take care of it.
Oh, you're efficient. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Pat Lopez, thirty-two oh nine Dixie Farm Road. I'm here for myself and my dad, which is adjacent to this piece of property, which is thirty-two oh seven Dixie Farm Road. Dad's not available to be here. It's past his bedtime. But, anyway, so, he's, we've been concerned about this property. The thing that's come up most was the previous applicant that had come in, and trying to do the maximum use. And as most of y'all know, I am in the construction business, so I am aware and see how things are managed, and it was a good opportunity for that. And if, to be honest with you, if I owned the property, I'd probably want to do the same thing. But, I'm not. I'm a homeowner. So, as a homeowner, and I didn't realize, I did not realize that my piece of property was already on the future plan for GB, which that plan probably won't work until I'm gone, anyway, so. But, we're not in favor of it. As you can see, I was the one that came up with the list that y'all have available for you, so there's no reason to read through that. And it seems like, as times that I had served on the Planning and Zoning Commission, it seems like Dixie Farm Road has kind of stayed from that area all the way down past the creek, and now where Pearland Parkway is. So, most of that's all stayed residential. So, anyway, appreciate y'all, and keep up the good work, as usual.
Good. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to enter into the record? Please, come down. Okay. Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Thank you. My name is Greg Nelson. I live at sixteen seventeen Pine Crest Drive, Pearland, seven-seven-five-eight-one. I'm here in opposition to changing the zoning on this property. I didn't know about the form letter, wish I did. The points, I think, are all very valid. The existing property, as has been stated, is a residential property. The three properties, and I'm going to call it to the west, going towards thirty-five, are also residential properties. And the gentleman who just appeared here, those are some nice houses that are adjacent to this property. I live in Pine Hollow Estates, which, after those three houses, you come to Pine Hollow Estates. I believe I would be negatively affected with it. Before any consideration is given to rezoning, the use needs to be determined. And you gentlemen all know, the different uses under that GB zoning, there's a multitude of uses that can come up with this. I've been a residential appraiser, excuse me, I've been a commercial appraiser for a number of years, and it's typical for highest and best use study to be done on vacant property. Quite easy to do, quite easy to request. But, the use needs to be determined for this property, before you give any consideration to the rezoning. The other thing, another point that was brought up in that form letter, is what is it going to do for the traffic count, the traffic flow on Dixie Farm, and the immediate neighborhoods? Those should all be studied closely before any thought of rezoning this property is given. And with that, those are the points that I have. Thank you.
Good. I appreciate those comments. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. And y'all did fill out these forms, and I think I saw yours. And thank you for that.
Hi. My name's Tony Giuliani. I'm the owner of the property. My wife and I have owned it for the last three years. it for the last three years. I guess, you know, first thing, I appreciate, you know, this is the second time around, so we're taking a different approach this time in terms of just coming for a general business rather than a specific. We're trying to, my mom lived at the property for two years, she fell, and she's no longer able to live there. So, we're trying to figure out what's possible on the property. So, I guess, you know, one of the things that comes to mind, I guess, you know, the Lopez's are, are great people, I have a lot of respect for their family, so I understand their position. You know, if I was in their, I would, position, I'd probably be against it as well. You know, I've told, you know, I reached out, I called Pat up, and I said, hey, you know, is there some point in time that we could, you know, down the road, that this would be a better time for you to consider this? So, I thought it was important to try to reach out to them and try to reach some kind of agreement. We weren't able to do that. I will, you know, not sure general business is the right zoning, but I guess I am going to be cognizant, if we, if it is successful, I'm going to be cognizant of their needs and try to do at least what's required, or if not more, because I have great respect for the people, and I don't, I don't want to cause them problems. I guess, you know, the property as it sits, you know, I'm next to Home Depot, I'm right across the street from Walmart. You know, it seems consistent with the future land plan as being business, general business. You know, it's, it certainly seems like a resident, or a commercial property, not a residential property. I mean, every week I go out there, and I pick up like a garbage bag of trash. So, people throwing stuff out, coming out of Walmart and coming out of Home Depot. So, you know, I understand there's different opinions on what it should be, so I'm just trying to figure out what's possible and what's not possible, but I appreciate your consideration.
Good, I appreciate those comments, thank you. Thank you, sir, thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Larry Marcott, 3606 Inverness Court, which is just down the street, that's 25 House Subdivision, we have one way in, one way out. The biggest problem that I have with a development like this is traffic. Try going Dixie Farm towards 45 in the morning, or coming back in the afternoon. 518 is full, way full. Well, Dixie Farm is worse. It's, it's a heck of a mess out there, come out at traffic time. This, if the businesses went in here, we'd have a heck of a mess. I have seen five cars get through the green light, three or four more in the yellow and the red light. That's not good. We've also, if, if we're turning left to go into town, we've got a very short window for traffic lane to get into the left turn lane, and, and we just have to wait, 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 wait. Something's got to be done to widen Dixie Farm in that area if you're going to develop it like this. It, it just doesn't, doesn't handle it. And we need Tech Dot to get in and help us get 518 all the way to Friendswood. And the talk now is maybe to the railroad tracks, or a little short of that. This is not a good idea for a business of, of any kind, a multi-story, you know, that's lots and lots of cars. Business trying to get in, out, this afternoon, I tried coming back out of Home Depot. Well, there's, there's, you can go to 518, but if you do that, you're going to have to go down and U-turn to get, to get back in because of the traffic that's backed up. If you come out one of the ones on the 518, you really have to go to the one that's further west to be able to get out, because the traffic is all balled up at that first entrance exit. Traffic is a problem. There's also the pipeline, the pipeline affects my subdivision. If something happened to pipeline there, we couldn't get out. But that doesn't matter here, but, but it is a problem, and neighborhood, single families is, is the way to go. Thank you.
Good, I appreciate those comments, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to enter into the record a comment or statement regarding this proposed zone change? Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to enter into the record of comments? I was sorry to. Hearing none, for the third purpose of the record, for the third and final time before we move forward in the agenda, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to enter into the record a comment statement or testimony regarding this proposed zone change? Hearing none, let us, let us move down to item number five on our collective agendas, which will allow for the Council Planning Commission and staff to discuss what they do. And starting with the City Council, Councilmember Carbon, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. I under, I feel for both sides of us. When you look at the, the future land use, I mean, it's next door to Home Depot, across the street from Walmart, it's not going to be residential. If I owned next door, I wouldn't want it to be GB. I mean, but the, the, you know, the property owner's stuck in a position saying, hey, I've, I've brought two contracts, run through, I don't know, 60, 90, 120 days with the city, and it falls through. So, I'd like to hear everybody else's discussion. If it doesn't look like GB is the way to go, what are the other options to give him some certainty? I mean, are we just going to say, no, that's going to be residential forever until, you know, Mr. Lopez passes away? And then we'll rezone his and this one to GB? I mean, if that's a certainty, then so be it, but right now, I, I don't see this as, as property that needs to be residential. So, I, I'll defer.
Okay, Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, being that it is situated behind Home Depot, I don't, I don't see it being residential, immediately behind Home Depot, and I wasn't as so much opposed to the, to the development that was supposed to come, or that was proposed the previous time, actually. I am opposed, though, to the home staying there. I'm opposed to the home staying there, I think it needs to, I mean, right now, there's, there's no proposal for what is going to be there, but not only that, there's a home that could turn into a business. And so, in my mind, you know, the home needs to be gone, because it, it wouldn't be fair to, to have that stay and then actually turn into something even more unsightful, or, or, you know, less appealing to the residents that live nearby. I mean, again, it, it's got to turn into something, it's, I, I don't see a, a group of homes being, being built back there, you know, maybe an assisted living facility like that was proposed before, or something similar, you know, I could see that being built back there, but other than that, I don't, I don't see, see it staying residential.
Good. One more?
I don't know if it's really GB, but being that it is nestled in there and kind of off of the retail node, maybe a neighborhood services, I, I, I don't know, I, I, I too don't see it staying residential, but I, I'm really not sure if it's GB, but I don't see it staying residential either.
Just a thought, as we go through this process with all of our zoning, we've, Pearland is now the eight fastest growing city in the nation according to the Census Bureau, and we're, we have the challenge of growing so fast, and with a quality type of city, everybody wants to come and build and be a part of it. And as a result, we have these little offering pieces of property left over. And the challenge is to try to make the little offering, offerings fit in with the use that, from a safety standpoint, from a traffic standpoint, from a impact on other adjacent residential or development, whatever might be there. So, it's, so it's something that we're, we have a number of these little pieces around, around the city, and so it's, this is a challenge to all of us to try to figure out how to make them work. I think traffic on this is, is a significant challenge for us, as in several other pieces of vacant property right at major intersections that are vacant, and trying to find a, something that everybody wants to put a, a project there that has a lot of people coming in and out, and that sometimes creates some problems, and there's some of them that, maybe there is a fix for these. So, we'll, we'll find out how to work, make something work in here. But, but it's something that, it's, it's, it is a challenge for us, and our staff is, is working hard to try to make, we, we get a lot more money from a tax base from something developed that put on that property than to be staying vacant. So, we recognize that, but we also need to put the right type of development in place there, so. Can I move a little?
All right, no comment at this time.
Okay, this one, Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. One, I'd like just to state for the record, I have a developing business relationship with the applicant's representative, it's not this project, but I want to make sure that's disclosed before I say anything. I would just say, we have in our comprehensive plan that we want it to be zoned commercial. You know, I don't think that corridor is necessarily appropriate for the high-density residential that's there, in my opinion. It is not spot zoning in this case because it's contiguous with the zone next to it. So, I, I would personally be supportive of the zone change to GB, I, I just, that's what the land needs to be. And, I mean, generally, to be fair, I, I appreciate that there are, I have land next to me that's barren, and I'd love for it to stay that way. You know, for me to make sure that that happens, I have to buy it, and, and leave it to be undeveloped. You know, I, I think that if we're hoping that something next door to us doesn't change, then we, a, as a council member, I'd say you're perfectly, I'm perfectly happy to give you that right, but you've got to own it first. We can't negatively affect the existing owner in something that I think is conformance with what we believe that zone to be based on, but it's been this for a while. It, it is appropriate for a, a commercial zone, it's next door to a commercial zone. The people who've lived in that house have lived next door to a commercial zone and a commercial use, I think, for years without, without much concern, so I, I think it really is incumbent upon, incumbent upon us when we have the applicants who are asking us to change the zone that meets with our comprehensive plan for us to, for us to take those opportunities. So, I, I think, I think we need to have, well, I'm supportive of, of this being, this zone change being accepted.
Information, information on the record, Mr. Chairman, or you and the Planning Commission of the floor?
No comments at this time, Mayor.
No comment? Staff have any wrap-up comments at this point? Okay, I'm going to move to item six, who let me adjourn. Best standalone Dr. Public hearing at 8:13. And in a like manner, open a joint public hearing, City Council, City Pearland, Planning and Zoning Commission. And for zone change, 170008, I'd like the Chairman of the Planning Commission to read into the record the purpose of the hearing tonight. Perez, would you, would you hand, hand him your?
Nevermind.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, this is a request to City Pearland for proposed amendments to Unified Development Code, ordinance 2000T-25.
That information on the record, let's move to item three, application information case summary.
Mr. Mayor, this is a request to amend the tax of the UDC, there's four proposed changes to the tax. The first one is a change to the land use matrix that allows a martial arts studio, dance and drama studio, tutoring center, and learning center by right in the office professional zones. The second is to allow breweries, micro distilleries, micro wineries to park food trucks in their parking lot. The third is to prohibit lighting along edges of windows, doors, signs, and other openings. The fourth is prohibit bars and metal grills on outer facades, on windows, doors, and other openings. So, the first amendment is in reference to the studio or learning centers for fine art, performing arts. As you can see, this use is allowed by either conditional use apartment or by right in various other zoning districts that are already listed in the land use matrix. And this particular proposed amendment will allow it by right in the OP zone. Additionally, just to add, the OP zone is considered the least intense commercial zoning The second proposed change is to allow food trucks for micro breweries, micro distilleries, and micro wineries. Again, this amendment will allow breweries, micro distilleries, and wine, micro wine, wineries to park food trucks in their parking lots, seven days a week, with the following conditions. If the food trucks are not permitted as part of the initial CUP for micro breweries, micro distilleries, or micro wineries, and additional CUP will be required to evaluate their appropriateness on site. So, the proposed text is listed, is shown on red, in red on the screen, and the proposed text and the CUP will look at, the number of vendors shall be limited to a maximum of three per site with a minimum of one acre per truck. Vineyards, vendors shall not be used as a commensary, vendors shall not be allowed to, to park overnight or stay overnight. The area for food trucks shall be outside of the fire lanes and will not be encroached on required parking spaces. Food handlers shall follow current city standards in regards to food handling, handlers permits. Food trucks shall not be located on parcels that are adjacent to residential uses. Food trucks shall be screened from the view of adjacent streets and similar, similar to how we screen parking spaces currently. Associated equipment, associate equipment such as generators, gas tanks, shall be located in areas not visible to, to the public or from the street. Additional parking shall be provided as per the UDC for food trucks, and other conditions of the CUP as approved by the City Council. So, the third proposed amendment is to prohibit lighting along edges of windows, doors, signs, and other openings. And the proposed, proposed change to the tax is shown in red, unless permitted as part of the signage personate to the division and elsewhere in the UDC, light strips, spotlights, bulbs, and other similar lighting around windows, doors, opening, signs, or any part of the building or site are prohibited. The fourth change to the text, a proposed change, is to prohibit bars, metal grills on outer facades, on windows, doors, and other openings. And this text is actually added to the section 2.6212 and 3 of the UDC, and the text stays actually the same, it says, bars, metals, grills, and other materials shall not be prohibited on inner or outer facades, walls, windows, doors, and, and other openings except as trail materials permitted by 2.2, 2.621C3. So, that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Good. I appreciate those comments. The, the agenda sort of says, item A is staff report, and item B is applicant presentation, we just had that, so it was a double whammy in one place, so thank you for that. And is there any additional staff wrap-up comments at this point? Okay. Well, let's move to item four of our collective agendas, to permit anyone who'd like to speak for or against any of these proposed changes. And we start with, is a first call for, for presentation at this point? And we start with is a first call for presentation at this point. Councilman, thank you very much. I appreciate you being here tonight.
Hi, Charles Buck Stevens, forty-seven oh one West Orange, Pearland, Texas. I'm, first of all, this is a, wow, trying to remember it all in one place. Two things that I'd like to speak in support of definitely is the lighting situation. The proposal is a little bit, still a little bit vague. I sat on the actual committee probably twenty-five, thirty years ago when we actually came up with some of the, back then it was just under the signed ordinance when we restricted some of the lighting. And there was a clause there that restricted all lighting, no matter what it was, all around any window, inside or out, or door, inside or out. And somehow or another, I guess that went away at some point. Now we're now we're back at trying to correct what has been done away with and kind of gotten out of hand. So not only do I support that going back in place, the other side of that is I, also at that time, and maybe we can't do this again, I'll give you one example, we used to have a lot of portable signs around town on wheels and I actually owned a company that had those and voted and voted for it to support getting rid of those unsightly portable sign, portable signs, trailer signs. However, we did do a phased-out program where we phased out even the ones that were in existence then. We did something that allowed us to get rid of all those to come into compliance. In other words, we grandfathered a few places in town that still had them, but as they went away or as a six-month or eight period of time went by, then eventually all the signs had to be removed. I'm just wondering if we can go back to some of the companies that have now installed all these lights that flash and flicker and some, in some regard, blind you and get rid of all of them. That would be my suggestion. I don't know if we can do that still or not. The other item is, I've also been a firefighter here for twenty-eight years, retired, retired from Pearland Fire Department, and I can tell you that I'm totally against, you know, it's a double-edged sword for me. I'm also a police officer. So from the police side, we tell people to go put up burglar bars and secure their doors with double-dedged bolts and all those kinds of things. But as the firefighter side of me, if, as a previous fire inspector, I would say no bars, no double-sided locks. It's always people over property, right? So they can insure their property if it burns down, you know, I'm sorry, I don't like to lose my property either, but I'm going to save lives way before I'm going to save anything else. So bars shouldn't be any bars anywhere. I even struggle with some of the facilities we have in town now that have totally enclosed walls that close up at night and secure the building. It's a firefighter's nightmare. And then the other thing, the only thing I saw on the food truck that I was reading over really fast is the screening provision. One of the things that if I were a food truck owner and I think even a proprietor that a food truck own, food truck is being utilized at, I certainly don't have a problem with the food trucks being screened from adjacent property, residential in particular, if they back up to that or side of that. But from the street side, I think it's actually a marketing issue. I think if the, if the food truck company is going to be there, they're going to try to, they want to try to bring in not only customers to the places that are having these food trucks there, but also to the food truck vendor themselves. So I would not look so strict on the screening from a, from the Jason, from the street side, I guess, if I read that correctly. Certainly from the other sides, residential, other sides that are being, you don't want to impact your citizens that live next door to those facilities. And I guess if I read it also right, it's one acre per truck, if that's right. Three truck maximum, one acre per truck. That seems awful large, but I don't know, maybe some finigling room in there that seems awful, seems like a lot of land for a food truck, but that's it. Thanks.
Good. Appreciate those comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to enter? Please, come down. Thank.
I'd just like to speak on what we just.
Because you're speaking in a different category now, I think you need to have, fill out one of those forms too. But you can do that after you get through talking.
Okay. Very familiar with the breweries that exist now in Pearland.
Introduce yourself, Logan.
Oh, Richard Scottak, thirty-ten Ravensport Drive.
Okay.
Pearland, seven-seven-five-eight-four. Yeah, I love breweries. And we have some great ones here in Pearland. And they all have food trucks now. Normally, one food truck is sufficient, but the regulations that were proposed make a heck of a lot of sense. I think you should adopt them. But one of the things at the top of that, it caught my attention, is the office professional designation that was going to allow martial arts, dance. If we put yoga on there, would not that seventy-five oh one fight fall under office professional? Dance, martial, yoga, office professional for the Doctor's Wellness Center. She is definitely a professional. Boy, did I slip that one in. Thanks so much.
Okay. Appreciate those comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to enter into the record of some, a comment, statement or testimony for the proposal? Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to enter into the record, a comment, statement or testimony regarding this proposed request? The third and final time for the purpose of the record before I move forward in the agenda, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to enter into the record, comment, statement or testimony regarding the proposed zoning changes? And hearing done, let's move then to item number five on our collective agendas. And I'll preface that with a couple of remarks that, you know, when we were a smaller city, when developers came in and put their facility in, they really made it neat because they wanted to really stand out so that they could attract their customers and really have sense of pride. And as you grow in a city with population and started getting the density closing in as we're doing, some examples here tonight with Alphand places, there's a tendency to want to try to stand out with with unique type of ideas at flashing lights and things of that type. And which is natural and that fits well in New Orleans and some other places, but not in Pearland. So this is a case here where we're trying to keep the quality of life and if you're going to build a building in Pearland, if you're going to develop it, you want to make sure that that your place is going to be respected like all the others that have built with a sense of pride too as well. So that's, that's part of our mission as a, as a development team, so. Let me start this off with council, with Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. Generally, I think all these provisions, all these additions are good. I get a general question, one, I'd like to thank staff for reacting to the comment we made at the last CUP about adding those. I think it's appropriate that we're going to restrict certain use in CUP that we restrict everybody as opposed to doing it by the time. So I really appreciate y'all adding that to this because I do think it's appropriate. But the, the food truck, I'm fine with allowing the food trucks. My only question is, do we have an overarching ordinance that, that allows or does not allow or adds provisions on the food truck as, as it is? Are we better to have one ordinance addressing food trucks? I know City of Webster just did something similarly where they had all of these provisions kind of in a, in, in one, one ordinance that dealt with food trucks throughout the entire city as opposed to putting it in the UDC. The only reason I say that is, you know, if I'm a food truck vendor and I'm looking to, to get a permit to be here, I don't know if I'm going to the UDC to look for it. I would probably, I know a lot of cities have started adopting food truck ordinances that spell out what we can and can't do. You know, I do think it's appropriate that we limit to where we have, and I think everything that you're putting here is, is the right language to have in there. But I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that UDC is the best place to land it as opposed to its own ordinance. That would be my only comment.
Congressman Little?
Most of the proposed changes make sense to me. The thing that caught my eye was the one acre per truck. I don't know, was that, was that correct? It is, it seemed a little larger to me.
It's more in reference to parking, making sure that the remaining truck or the use has enough parking for the truck.
Just catching on. More?
It's, 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 you have to have one acre to allow to have three trucks on there. It's not one acre per truck, right?
Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
I'm fine with all of that. There's one thing that I'd like to see us look at, and that is if I was a food truck, if I owned a food truck and I was trying to come into Pearland, I've talked to several of them, they said it's difficult for them to get their permit to operate here because there's some kind of inspection or something that's required. And it takes us a long time to do that inspection, so they're like, you know what, I'm not going to worry about it. So they either operate illegally in here, so we lose out on money from them, and it's hard for code enforcement to catch them because they're moving. Or they come and they wait, you know, all day long to try to get this inspection. I'd like to see if there's something that we could do to allow it, if they have an inspection currently already, if we can honor that inspection, but, I mean, we could still charge them a fee, processing fee or whatever to, to get their other, to get their current inspection done. But that, that's the only thing I'd like to look at and see if we could do something with.
Congressman Reed?
I also want to thank staff for, for putting this together and working towards making these changes. Not anything specific to the changes that were made, but I'm actually having some, some work done at my house and one, the guy or the contractor said to me that it's very difficult to get things done here in Pearland as far as permitting and that kind of thing. And so I'd like to see us continue to make these changes and more to make it easier to do business here in the city.
Okay. Congressman Pecarbone?
Thank you, Mayor. To follow up on the comments, I'm sure Legals looked at it, but if you can make sure that we've got the specificity that we need for the lighting ordinance. I mean, at the end of the day, we don't want to be blinded, I don't want to be blinded when I drive down the street and somebody has bright LEDs, you know, circling the windows and doors. In terms of the food truck, just to clarify, Councilman Moore said it was, it was one acre for three trucks, but the way I read it, it's limited, or it's a maximum of three per site with a minimum one acre, minimum of one acre site area per truck. So is it, it's going to take a three-acre site to get three trucks?
Yeah. Staff just reread it and actually it is stating that it's going to be one acre per truck, so three acres for three trucks.
No. No. No.
Well, that's how it's written, so I don't have a dog in the hunt and I'm, I'm fine either way, but just want to make sure everybody's clear on what's written.
Yeah, so currently, if that's correct, I don't think that.
Backfish?
Backfish is three acres of property. So currently, if we change this, then that, that puts them to operate illegally to have food trucks. And that's kind of against what we're trying to do.
Backfish would be grandfathered in because they have, their PD has specific rules that say that is what they get.
So the only place in town that will have food trucks would be Backfish under this.
Their, their PD is what outlined, their.
Yeah, so, so the only place currently that will have food trucks will be at Backfish because they're grandfathered. There's nobody else that's going to have three acres of property.
Matt Buchanan, Executive Manager, Development Services. As you'll remember, people can come in, I think for up to sixty days, they can get food trucks. So people can still have food trucks. These would people, people would be allowed to have it by right if they come in and get a conditional use permit. And so this is the exact language that was in Backfish. They are allowed to have this ratio. So if you allowed them to have less, then someone would be able to have more trucks than what Backfish has. So we just modeled it. I believe we copied it verbatim versus what we agreed to, to allow Backfish to do so that we would just replicate it, felt that'd be fair to, you know, not have them have a more stringent or less stringent than what Backfish did. So next time another winery or another brewery would come in, we would just, we just modeled it off of Backfish's.
So they're going to have to come in and get a CUP plus an inspection? So we're looking at like two or three days before you could get a food truck on site?
I'm not a food expert, but everybody that comes in and sells food has to have a food inspection, have to do an inspection. That's what I believe the people would be referring to. If they come in with their food truck, I believe they have to have a food inspection.
Yeah, most of them have a, an inspection from Houston or somewhere else. And I'm just asking that we look at honoring that inspection, charge them a fee, let them go on their, you know, review their paperwork, let them go on their way. But now we're saying that they're going to have to come get a CUP also?
Well, no, the owner of the property would have the CUP, not, not each truck would.
Okay.
Truck, yeah, be just by the, by the property.
So just for clarification.
Congressman Pecarbone, do you have a wrap-up comment?
Just for clarification, the CUP exists for the brewery. So let's say that use is in place and they decide to have an event and they want to have food trucks at their event, then we're saying by change of this ordinance, they're allowed to have the food trucks because of the CUP that they already have.
No, they'd have to come in, so we only have one brewery in town that doesn't have the right to have a food truck. So they're going to have to come in and get a CUP to have the food trucks, to look at their site, decide how many they can have. But then in the future, the next brewery that comes in, they would be by right be able to have that as part of their CUP. So this first one's one, and obviously the existing one, Backfish, has food trucks already from a PD that we did.
So a CUP to get the brewery and then another CUP to allow the trucks in the.
For this one case, but for the future people.
Well, that's what I'm referring to is the future.
The future, no, they would just have one CUP.
Okay, so that's, the way that we're writing the ordinance right now is that if somebody has a CUP for a brewery, these triggers would come in place, another CUP would not be required.
No. He would have to get a CUP, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So in the future, not, not this individual. I've got a brand-new brewery, I'm putting it in, everything's, I get a CUP for my brewery.
And you could get, at the same time, you could get, all those conditions would be in one CUP.
Okay.
You wouldn't have to come back.
All right, so that, I guess what I'm getting to is what, what we're doing in the future is allowing the food trucks to be a part of the CUP for a brewery or winery from that, so it's one CUP for all future uses.
Correct.
Okay. I would, I would want to be careful about, you know, I don't know where the boundary is as far as three acres or one acres. What I'd be careful about is some of these food trucks get very popular and we already had some people complaining and had some, had some concerns about the parking impacts when Backfish had their events. So we would need some acreage condition, I think, on these food trucks to make sure that if we're having it at the brewery, the brewery already has their parking. These, these trucks are going to, by definition, pour more people into the site, so they're going to need more parking or make sure that there's a sufficient parking. And I don't, you know, I'm, I do some databases, I couldn't tell you exactly what it, what it would need to be, but I would, I would struggle to say we can get three trucks on one acres because if you have three restaurants on a one-acre tract, you're just not going to park, be able to park there.
And with staff clarifying that this is the same standard, no more, no less than Backfish, I'm, I'm fine with the way this was written. And to address Councilman Moore's position, I, can we speed up the inspection process? Okay, I'm, I'm fine looking at that, but when any established restaurant here in Pearland is subject to these inspections, I don't want to give somebody a pass that's been inspected anywhere else and just let them come in, you know, drive in for a day, for a weekend, however long, compete with our, our restaurants that are already here that are paying, you know, property taxes and, and sales taxes here. I don't want, I don't want to make it any more difficult, but I don't want to bend over backwards and, and not put them through the inspection that everybody else has to go through.
So if they're not on a one-acre plot, then they would not be able to have any food trucks, period, right? Okay.
Yeah. And the food trucks have been sort of a recent phenomenon in the Houston Gulf Coast area, so it's, we've got a little bit of a learning curve. And we've observed what's happened in some of the other communities and it's not the best thing for us to have at certain locations sometimes, so we have to be very careful to get out in front of these rather than trying to play catch-up and then kick people out later. So it's, they, they seem to be, in some areas of Houston, I've gone up some areas around Greenway Plaza and they're right on the fastest, biggest corner where, where intersection of West, Westhammer and some of the places where they just, they've become a traffic issue. And, but if they're in the right place, it's a nice place to stop and get, get a bite to eat, so that's okay, but we're trying to, trying to cure that before it gets out of hand in Pearland, so. That comment from the council, let's move to Chairman of the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission.
I guess I had one, or a couple of comments on the lights. Definitely opposed to the string lights, LED lights, whatever you want to call them. I also think that the existing, the existing installations we have, I'd like to ask staff to find out from possibly engineering if, if those installations are per, per electrical code or not, because they're putting electrical wires on the outside of existing window frames. Just doesn't seem right. I don't know if that's code or not, allows that, but the ones I've seen have connectors and such where they're hanging off the windows there where people can touch them, so definitely. So, um, definitely, uh, support that. Uh, on the food trucks, there's been some discussion amongst P&amp;Z, I think we've had a workshop about, uh, food chalk, food truck corrals around the city to, to approve certain areas for food trucks on certain weekends. There's definitely a demand for this on the high-end food trucks in the city, um, and it seems like the one acre is, is a pretty big requirement for, for what they are. Seen them pull up into the city in, in front of large office buildings, and we have some large office buildings in, in the city, and certainly we'll have more. In other towns, I've seen them at, um, different hospitals, businesses where they show up, and I think that's something that we need to, to look at allowing, uh, but still controlling as much as we need to, but allow businesses to bring them in. That's all I've got.
That concludes your remarks.
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Staff have any wrap-up comments at this point?
Yes, staff wants to reiterate right now that this only allows food trucks for breweries, micro distilleries, and micro wineries.
Okay, good. We all move to item six on our collective agendas. You'll join me in adjourning this standalone Dr. Public hearing. And at this point, the city council will remove itself from this chamber, and the planning commission will move up here. So there'll be a moment of transition here where the planning commission moves up to the council chamber, uh, place. So thank all of you for being here, for listening to the city and planning commission combined. So now you're in the hands of the planning commission by itself.